Three, two, one.
Good evening, welcome. This is a special meeting of the Northampton City Council. Today is November 12, 2020, and we are being audio and video recorded. We are going to go right into our agenda because it's a special meeting. So Laura, will you please take the role?
Sure. Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Foster. Oh, not present yet. Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we have only two items on the agenda. First, we are going to the recess for finance to take up one of them, and then we'll come back into the full council. So we're going to recess for finance. And Laura, will you please take the role of Finance?
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Okay, our only item on here is 20.148 in order to suspend parking fees on certain days. And this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkwitz. Ordered that on the following days, collection of fees for on-street and off-street parking spaces excluding the EJ Gare parking garage shall be suspended. Thursday, November 19, 2020 to Saturday, November 21, 2020. That is for what is normally Bag Day for one day is being extended to four days temporarily just for this year. And being temporarily renamed by the Northampton, Downtown Northampton Association to Yule Days just for this year. And so that runs from the 19th to 21st. And next we have Friday, November 27, 2020. That's for Black Friday. Saturday, November 28, 2020, Small Business Saturday. Thursday, December 24. This should say 2020. It says 2019 here. That's Christmas Eve, so that's a scribbler's error that we'll correct. And Thursday, December 31 also should be 2020 instead of 2019, and that's New Year's Eve. So is there a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. And I see that both Amy Kaling and Mayor Narkwitz are here. Mayor?
I will go first. Typically, I bring every year for the past, I don't know how many years, we've brought the order related to just the end of November, Friday of November, essentially the last four items. We've not traditionally done parking on Bag Day, but this year, given the circumstances and given the challenges facing our downtown businesses and the fact that it is spread out over several days. When the announcement was made, the Yule Days would be part of this, that we decided to bring that forward this year, which then, of course, necessitated the problem that we weren't going to have a meeting between now and the, well, we'd have one on the 19th, but it would be a little late at seven o'clock at night to come to you and ask you to make parking free on the 19th. So so that's why we're bringing it forward tonight in advance of the 19th. But again, the four days, the, you know, the four days at the end of the order, those are ones that have been enacted the past, I don't know, five, six, seven years. The one difference is the multi-day Yule Days, which as you noted was a one, one, one-time change. We hope it'll be a one-time change from Bag Day, and that will be back to hopefully normal this time next year.
Excellent. Councillors, are there any questions? If anyone would like us to recognize Amy Kaling from the Downtown Northampton Association, we can we can vote to recognize her. So thoughts, comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Amy Callahan, please.
Okay, so is that a motion to recognize?
I'd like to make a motion to recognize Amy Callahan.
Okay, second, okay, motion's been made and seconded to recognize Amy Kaling. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Welcome, Amy. You are so.
Thank you. I've never been so officially recognized. I just appreciate the mayor bringing this forward and all of you considering, and this year in particular, even though parking, you go downtown and there are parking spots available, I think every marketing tool that we can give our downtown business community to encourage folks to feel comfortable coming downtown. This year, we need to do that. And so one thing that I have getting a lot of requests for is the ability to tell their customers that parking will be free during Yule Days, which is the extended iteration of Bag Days for this year. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Councillors? Questions or comments for Amy? Counselor Dwight?
Amy, this is probably actually just, it's more for the mayor, probably insofar as their blanket orders monitoring the behavior of customers in, you know, there, I would imagine if passes prologue that we'll see still, even despite the pandemic, we'll see a lot of people jamming into stores and the like, and with the documented increase in COVID cases and even in Massachusetts, which is still on the lower end of the rest of the country, but the fact is, and that's largely due to the fact that we've been very vigilant. And I'm wondering how we maintain that vigilance, that level of vigilance in pandemic shopping enthusiasm.
For me or for the mayor?
That's probably more for the mayor because since you don't get, you don't get to tell people what to do in that respect.
No, I can share with you what some of the stores are doing, though, if that would be of interest.
That would be. Yes, please.
I don't know if the mayor wants to go first. I'll defer to.
Go ahead, Amy, please.
I will just say that all of the stores, as you know, have social distancing requirements in place, and many are because of concerns over holiday congestion are doing shopping by appointment specifically to avoid scenarios where there's big crowds. And all of the Bag Day discounts are being extended, I think, across the board to online shopping as well. So I think the stores all recognize the concern and are taking proactive steps to manage crowds because they don't want the crowds in their stores anymore than people want to be crowded in their stores.
And also, this was the thinking behind spreading it over four days. Typically, Bag Days, one day, people get their bag and they like all converge downtown.
And it was the reason we renamed it as well. There is no bag. There's no going to Thorns to crowd in to get your bag. It's four days, so pick a time that's convenient for you but not crowded.
Yeah, and I would just echo what Amy said, that all the regulations remain in place. We'll have our downtown ambassadors from the Health Department downtown. I'm assuming the DNA will have their ambassadors out as well. We have we have our Health Department enforcement folks and DNA has ambassadors, so we'll certainly be doing stepped-up public education around it. But yeah, this doesn't obviate any of the rules that are in place. So we're hoping, you know, masks and social distancing and hand sanitizer and limits on who can be, how many people can be in stores. And you're, and people are offering a discount during those four days. Is it uniform, Amy, or is it?
It is not because it was just too much to ask stores in this budget climate to do a 20% off for all four days uniformly. It's up to each particular store, so it's different iterations of 20% discounts.
I'm going to go to Counselor Nash. Amy, where can people find out that sort of information? Is that going to be on the DNA website?
It will be on the DNA website, the Gazette website and northhampton.live. It will be on the radio this week or next week. There'll be an insert in the Gazette. So I think those three channels, DNA, northhampton.live and the Gazette.
Great, thanks, Counselor Nash. We can't hear you.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. That Amy was mentioning the, the lack of consensus on the discounts. I sat in on some of the DA, DNA meetings. And I just want to recognize what good work this is to actually, you know, bring the downtown businesses into a consensus on these, these Yule Day times to come and do this shopping for, to replace the Bag Day because that she was against that idea of bringing back Bag Day this year and, and led the downtown businesses to come up with this solution. And so I just want to recognize her leadership around this particular thorny issue during our pandemic here. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, kudos? Okay. Seeing none. Roll call on a positive recommendation, please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that goes forward with the positive recommendation from Finance, and there's no other business on the Finance agenda, so. Very much.
To adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe to adjourn a role on adjourning, please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned out of Finance and back in the City Council, and we're going to take up that first order that we just discussed in Finance, so 20.148 in order to suspend parking fees on certain days.
Move to approve, please.
Seconded.
Motion's made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Is there any discussion in the full council on suspending parking fees on those days? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Foster, I think she's still missing, but I just didn't want to miss her if she came in.
I do not see her.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Yep. Motion's been made to suspend roles by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on suspension of roles? For the very obvious reason as to our next meeting is that first day, which is why we're meeting today to discuss this. Roll call, please, on suspending roles.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Move second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Jared, seconded by Counselor Labarge on second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Maori. Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings and parking fees will be suspended on those days. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up is 20.149 in order to extend 20.062 in order temporarily suspending the effect of certain ordinances. And so I'm going to read this order, which is upon the recommendation of David J. Narkwitz. Whereas on June 4, 2020, the Northampton City Council entered Order 20.062, which suspended the effect of certain ordinances in order to facilitate use of public property for outdoor dining in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Order 20.062 expires by its terms on November 15, 2020, and whereas the mayor desires to extend the order so as to expire on March 31, 2021. Now, therefore, the Northampton City Council orders as follows, ordered that paragraph six of Order 20.062 shall be amended by striking the phrase "November 15, 2020" and inserting in its place the phrase "March 31, 2021. All other provisions of said order shall remain in full force and effect." Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Maori. And Mayor Narkwitz, would you like to?
Certainly, yes. Obviously, that order stated that, that the, when we asked you to approve these extraordinary sort of provisions allowing us to make changes, it was contingent on November 15 or the lifting of the Governor's Emergency Order. And obviously, we know that the emergency order is going to stay in place. And while we are going to be removing some of the structures in the public way because, basically because of winter and the concerns around snow, we have set up a number of additional 15-minute spaces in front of businesses at requests for dining, takeout and pickup. And so we've probably added about 20 or 25 or so additional 15-minute spots around town in front of businesses that are trying to do takeout and to facilitate that. And so while, and so basically, if, those will all become illegal on November 15. And so at a time when we, when probably as businesses now have to move indoors again and rely on takeout and pickup, it's a time that we don't want those to go out of, out of effect. So we want to maintain that, the ability to keep those in place over the winter as well as have the flexibility if there's other things we want to do, you know, additional, additional pickup spaces as we move through the winter time into the new year. So essentially, we're just asking to keep that in place through the end of March, and we'll revisit it again and see where we are then. And maybe we may need to come back for an extension if we, if we plan to set up outdoor dining again in the spring. We don't know, but at least for the time being, we want to keep it in place.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nash, then Counselor Dwight.
Yeah, I just want to say that I support this, this extension of the order, that I think that the mayor's office has done a terrific job of working with businesses to figure out ways to accommodate their needs using the, the public right-of-way, whether it's for outdoor dining or for additional, or for pickup, for takeout, the 15-minute spaces. And, and I think this is usually, you know, the, that parking regulations go through council and that we, we take a long view on parking zones. And I think during this pandemic and this difficult time for downtown, allowing the mayor's office to respond in a, in a much quicker fashion than we usually do to, to businesses' needs downtown would be, is paramount. So I just want to recognize that we are handing over authority back to, you know, to the mayor's office on making some of these decisions. But it is due to the fact that we're weathering this state of emergency. So I am supportive of it.
Thank you. Counselor Dwight, then Counselor Labarge.
Insofar as this has been vetted once already before when the initial order was put in place, and and there I express my concerns again about the fact that this is not a business space. It is a public space, and we should remember and keep that in mind. This is actually the city, as Counselor Nash mentioned, the city working in concert with the businesses to, to accommodate them in a very difficult and challenging time. The reason I mention this, of course, is we're, none of us are unaware of the fact that there has been considerable pushback from a number businesses and agencies that are concerned about the pressures that COVID brings. And with a certain sense of expectation from the city to accommodate that sometimes has not been met with maybe the understanding that this is actually the city trying to work in order to save these businesses or to prevent them from further pressure and, and stress. But at the same time, recognizing this is public space, not exclusive. It's not a mall. It has no, it is not designed to be a restaurant. The sidewalk is not designed to be a restaurant. It's designed to be a sidewalk where people can congregate, people, even people you don't like. And so and I know that we've, we've had ongoing and will continue to have ongoing conversations about what the, how we envision the city of Northampton's physical layout and accommodations into the next century. And we will continue to have those conversations. It's just I want to make sure that the loudest voices in the room aren't always the ones that get their way. And I would like, you know, just the businesses to understand that this actually does come at a cost. It's a cost borne by the city. There's, when we give up those parking spaces, say, I don't know, on, on Sonic Street, say, like six spaces there, we're seeding that revenue and at the same time providing for a business to, to weather these challenging times. I don't expect a thank you note, but at the same time, I don't expect someone to come telling me that we're not being business friendly. Sorry, I'm being a little surly, and I'll stop.
Thank you, Counselor Labarge.
I'm going to support this order. I think the mayor, his office, and even councillors, we're all trying to help our businesses survive. And when I was downstreet, I noticed some of the 15-minute parking signs, which I think is great. I think it's needed. We need to look at further coming down the road here of the COVID-19. As we all know, right now, Chicabe now has an uptick, and their schools now are going into full remote control. So we as councillors are helping our businesses, our small businesses, the bigger business restaurants, no matter which way we're going here. And I support the movement that we're doing. And I just want to thank the mayor again and his office and us councillors for helping out all the businesses to the best that we can because of the COVID-19. And I think, just talking with one of the doctors that I talked with today, he said that him and his wife, they don't go into the restaurants, but they do order, and they drive right up, go ahead and pick up their food and go home. So this is needed. I think we need the 15-minute spots because I think because of the COVID-19 that I know as a councillor, I am supporting all the businesses here in the city and even up in Florence. We never hear about Florence. And it has not been easy for them in that, up in Florence. So I support what the mayor is doing here with the 15-minute parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Labarge. Counselor Quinlan, did I see your hand before? And then Counselor Jarrett.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I understood in terms of logistics. So I have a question for the mayor about it. Like the cement barriers that we see around the parking spaces now, are those being removed? And have you talked with the DPW about snow removal? I just want to, just curious about that to make sure that those thoughts are all kind of in a row here. And then, and just would add as well to, to the chorus of voices here that I, I do support the idea here. I just want to make sure I understand that logistics of a snow removal coming up soon, I'm sure.
Yeah, so we've already been in contact with all of the, all of the businesses that currently have the cement barriers set up in the public ways, and they know that DPW will be removing those next week. We've already scheduled it. You'll probably note that some businesses have already taken their tables in. I noticed Packards today had, after the weekend, had brought in all their tables, I think probably looking at the weather forecast of rain for the next, whenever. So the Department of Public Works has already planned and scheduled that next, early next week, they'll be gathering those all up and putting them back into storage. And, and we notified, you know, the, the businesses you know, with well over a month's notice of, of the timing of that. We don't have any snow imminent, but this is New England, so we know that it can come anytime. So we already had one sort of snowstorm, but it luckily didn't really stick very much. But yeah, that's, so we have planned and they know, and we are, we are on, on track to have those removed next week.
Great. And just to follow up on, so on snow removal, if we're, if these spaces are intended to be used for, for pickup and to keep spots open for, for our businesses to, to access their, their customers and vice versa, those will be cleared without too much trouble. And DPW's planning on clearing them, you know, easily?
Yeah, no, and, and you know, our normal snow removal in our downtown, you know, that they'll be removed. The parking is one of the top priorities for snow removal in a snowstorm is to clear all the snow out of the parking area. It's one of the reasons why we push it all to the center. So yes, we will, all of our parking areas, you know, will have high priority in a snow emergency. It's, you know, one of the reasons why we have, we have a snow emergency after 2:00 AM on Main Street, and then obviously midnight in the rest of those streets downtown so that we can get, mostly to get all the parking, the roads cleared, but particularly downtown, getting all the parking cleared for the resumption of business every morning.
Great, thank you.
And I did want to also just echo what Counselor Labarge said because this order does apply to downtown Florence. And so, you know, obviously Florence doesn't have paid parking, but we certainly would, will be working with any businesses that want, you know, additional 15-minute spots for pickup or, or, or anything like that. So I just want to also recognize that this order does apply to both of our downtown business districts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. Yes, I'm also in support of this and just wanted to echo some of Counselor Dwight's concerns around the use of the public space and but specifically following up on a question I had back on June 4, when we put in this order, had to do with, could you take off your mask to eat or drink if you say got takeout and then went somewhere where you were socially distanced? I think that, given the new governor's state of emergency that just went into place on Friday, that that has actually been answered as a, as a no, and that we can't change that. But I just wanted, Mayor, if you had gotten any, any clarification on that question that I had back in June?
You know, it was a little bit of a gray area, and it's one of the reasons why we, we did a bunch of our own messaging and clarifications around it. You know, one of the things we did do in response to that because messaging and clarifications around it. You know, one of the things we did do in response to that, because the challenge was when, when you set up outdoor dining spaces, they were heavily regulated in terms of businesses had to actively manage them and they had to actively have a staff person there. And they had to, you know, clean the tables between customers. And so it wasn't like you could just put out tables and just let people free range use them. So that was a challenge. I do know by mid to late summer, one of the things the Health Department did on the lawn in Plasky Park was they did actually create mask-free zones specifically so that people who wanted to go and sit and take a break and take their mask off, they had actually mapped out spaces. And so that's one thing that the Health Department did to use their authority to allow that. Obviously, we're now going into colder weather and, you know, probably not going to be as hospitable to sit on the lawn in Plasky Park anymore. So that's going to be an ongoing challenge, I think. I mean, generally speaking, the interpretation has been that, you know, if you need to take a, you know, if you're walking and you need to take a drink of water or a sip of water, that you can take your mask or lift your mask up to do that. And, you know, so I guess I'll have to get clarification on where we are now that we move into winter time. But, you know, we've tried to give some leeway and obviously the, the creating of the mask-free zone in Plasky Park was an effort to do that as well. But where we go in the winter time, I'm not sure. I'll have to check with the Health Director on that and get back to you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that work.
Okay, any other questions? Comments on this? Okay, um, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
First reading and most of them made to suspend rules for second reading. Is there a second?
Second, second. Second, 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 second.
All right, it's been seconded. For the record, I guess we'll go with Counselor Dwight.
Anyone you want.
Um, any discussion on suspension of rules? A roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Move second reading, please.
Motion was made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge on second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings. May we not have to have this conversation again at the end of March?
Amen.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Thank you, Council President, for scheduling this meeting on short notice and thank you to the council for, for doing this on short notice as well.
You're very welcome. There's no other business on the agenda for this evening.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn. I'll second that.
I think it was Counselor Quinlan. And Counselor Dwight seconded it and no discussion on adjourning. So roll call, please, on adjourning.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We got.